இந்த ஆசிரியுதிக்கப்பட்ட முதலாம் நாள் மாலைவெளில் காதென் நான் கத்தறை நண்டியோடு ஸ்தோதரிக்கிறேன்.
மே ஆசிரியலா பல வினித தவைச் சந்தியாவ உதேசா மாவன்வாசிரப்ராஷான் சக்கரான்னீம்.
I pray is called for this blessed evening in your midst.
இந்த நாட்களில் நாம் வேதத்தில் ஆரோக்கியத்தைக் குறித்து நாம் படிக்க வந்திருக்கிறோம்.
மே தவசுவில் சுத்திலேவில் திவ்ய சனிபாரக்ஷாவ பிளிபானது இக்கன கெண்ணிமற்ற அபராச விசித்நவ.
We're all gathered together to learn about divine health right from the scriptures.
ஏரெமியா தீர்க்கதர்சி இன் புஸ்தகம் 33 ராமதிகாரம் 6 வசனத்திற்கு ஒரு விஷயின் நம்மடை கவனத்தை நாம் கொண்டு வரலாம்.
ஏரமியா திஸ்துங்கினி பறிச்சேதே ஹாயவெனிப் பதே வெத்திட்ட அப்பகே அவதானே யோமுகரமோ.
Let us all for once bring our attention to Jeremiah 3 verse 6. And I will cure them and will reveal unto them the abundance of peace and truth.
இதோ நான் அவர்களிக்கு சௌக்கியம் ஆரோக்கியம் வரப்பண்ணி, அவர்களைக் குணமாக்கி, அவர்களிக்கு பரிபூர்ண சமாதானத்தையும் சத்தியத்தையும் விழிப்பெற்றுவேன். பலவும் மம இடு சனிபியத் சுயாத்துப்பதவா ஓண்டு சுவக்கட்ட போது சமாதானிசா செபேகம் ஓண்டு பிரகாஷுக்கரான்னீம்.
கத்தறொடியே பரிசுத்தனாமதுக்கு மைமூண்டாவுதாக.
சமின்வாசிக்கிச்சுதோ நாம் இட்டு மகிமே வெ.
May the holy name of the Lord be glorified.
மனித வாழ்வில் மனிதனக்கு ஆரோக்கியம் மிகவும் அவசியமாகக் காணப்படுகிறது.
மினிஸ் வர்கியாட்டு திவ்ய சனிபாரக்ஷாவ அவசியகர்னவ.
Divine health is something very compulsory indispensable to mankind.
இந்த உலகத்திலே அவனுக்கு வாளும்படியான பலவிதமான காரியங்களை தேவன் குடுத்திருந்தாலும், அவன் பெற்றுருந்தாலும், அவனுக்கு ஆரோக்கியம் இல்லாவிட்டால் அது மற்றவைகளை வைத்து அவனுக்கு எந்த பயனுமில்லாமல் போய்விடுகிறது.
மே லோகியிட் மினிஸ் ஜிவிதே பவத்ம வெல்வென் உன்வாசின்னைக் குத்தேலா பாதுண்ணத் ஏதேவல் லபா உன் புக்திவின்தத் மினிஸிகுடத் நிரோகிபாவே நெதினம் ஒகின் பலக் வணைநெத.
It could be so true that God may have provided all sorts of things for the sake of man for the existence of man but still throughout if he is not able to have good health is not going to enjoy them.
தன்னுடைய வாழ்வில் அவனுக்கு ஆரோக்கியம் இல்லாவிட்டால் அவன் பதறிப் போய்விடுகிறான்.
அவோ தமாகே ஜிவிதே திவ்ய நிரோகிபாவே நெதினம் உதுகிததத் வேகதாக்கினுல பாய்.
He is in a state of distress if there is no good health in his life.
இந்தக் கடைசி நாட்களிலே 24 ராம்நுற்றாண்டிலே நாம் வந்து கொண்டிருக்கும்பொழுது மனிதன் ஆரோக்கியத்தைத் தேடி, பல இடங்களில் அளைந்து திரிகிறதீங்குடை நாம் கண்குடாகப் பார்க்கிறோம்.
விசயக்கினிசியேட்ட விசயவாசிட்ட பாத பாத்துவேன் அப்ப நிரோகிபாவே சனிபாரக்ஷாவ பத்தா மினிஸா நைக்குச்சாக்கெனிம் கரணபாவது அப்பதாக்கினேமோ.
And we who are seen in this 21st century are able to witness this fact and truth that man is trying so many methods to reach or find good health in his life.
இந்த முதலாம் நாள் மாலைவெளிலே கடம்ந்து வந்திருக்கிற அனைக்கு தேவனுடைய பிள்ளைகளுக்குடை ஆரோக்கியம் அத்தொருளாகத் தங்குடை வாழ்க்கையில் இருப்பதை நீங்கள் உணருகிறீர்கள்.
தேவதர்வான்கின் போதினப்பவ தமான்கிசிவிதே நிரோகிபாவே அக்ஷனிபாரக்ஷாவக்கின் தொரவ திவிகேவினப்பவ அப்பட தேககத ஹக்கிவத்திபினவ.
And even among the people of God we are able to see that there are so many who are seen without good health.
சுகம் கிடைக்கும்படியாக மனிதன் பல இடங்களுக்கு அளைந்து திரிகிறான்.
சனி பேசுவே லபா கேன்மிட்டு நோக்கிவ. மனுஷியா ஒபம்பொபக் கமந்கரிமின்சிடி.
And man is seen roaming about wandering here and there in order to seek good health.
மறுத்தவர்களுக்குடை மனிதனைக் குணமாக்க பல மைர்சிகளை எடுக்கிறார்கள். முடியாத பற்றிச்சத்திலே அவர்கள் சொல்லுகிறார்கள் உங்கள் தேவங்களைத் தேடிப் போங்கள் என்று அனிபிவிடுகிறார்கள்.
வைத்துவரியப்பவ ரோகாதுரே அசோகிரிமசதா அனைகவது பிரயாத்த தரணாத்தர் உங்கிப் பிரயாத்தே அவசானே அசார்த்தக பாவே அத்தகிலவிட்ட உபகேதிவியான் சீகரகான்னை யானுவேன் வைத்துவரியப்பவசாய்.
Even the doctors and physicians they endeavor so much in order that the patients may be healed of all their sicknesses and be in good health eventually they tell them you go and reach your God and seek God.
தேவன் மனிதனை சிஸ்டிக்கும்பொழுது அவனை ஆரோக்கியமுள்ளவனாக நல்ல சுகதேகியாக அவனை நீடித்த வாழ்வுள்ளவனாக சிஸ்டித்தார் என்று நாம் வேதத்திலே பார்க்கியீளம்.
தேவதாச் விசிய மினிஸா மாவனுல பூவாஸ்தாவேதி நிரோகிபாவியா சௌக்கிய சம்பன்ன கெனுக்கு ஹட்டியட்ட தீர்காயுஷே ஐத்தி மனுஷிக்குள்ளேசிட்ட மனுஷியவும் மாவனுல பூபாவ அப்பதேவ பச்செனி தக்கினவ.
And this is what we see in the evidence of the word of God when God created man that God created him in sound health and strength and has sworn who would have eternal life.
அப்படியிருக்கும்பொழுது இப்பொழுது ஏன் மனிதன் இவளும் வியாதியும் இவளும் வேதங்களும் வியாதிக்கு ஒரு பெரிய லிஸ்டை வைத்துக்கொண்டு அதே ஒரு பிரஸ்டேஜிபோல அவன் சுமந்துகொண்டு திரிகிறானே அதுக்கு காரணம்தான் என்ன?
ஏய் எச்சே திபியதி மனுஷியா ரோகியன் பீடித்தவேமின் நைக்குத் ரோகபிளிபானது ஹரியட்ட லைஸ்டோ பொத்ரைஸ்டோ மென் நடேத் தபாகினு சுவைப் சானே பத்தா ஏனேயத்த யான்னட்ட ஹேதுவக்குமாக்கு.
Now when the man and matter is such how is it that man is seen not seen without good health and strength and he is seen with a list of reasons as to why he is sick and why is he wandering here and there.
If you are stricken with any sickness and ripsicles or disease is serving against your life in your life, you make sure that you will search out your love before you leave the presence of God and that will bring out a real solution in your life.
I shall mention before you three people who was beaten by the Lord. This is what we read in Second Samuel chapter 12 verse 15 because of the beating on the Lord. We see as to how the Lord smote the child and he was suffering there because of a terrible sickness. Even at the point of time when he should have gone for the battle, he gave room to comfort and all sorts of lasting his life. And thereby he became smitten by the Lord and that was a destruction to his seed. When you fail to go for prayers at the time when you should give it to the Lord and you becomes smitten by the Lord. And therefore there becomes comes a destruction in your life. When you fail to go for prayers at the time when you should give it to the Lord and you becomes smitten by the Lord. And therefore there becomes comes a destruction in your life. Even at the point of time when he should have gone for the battle, he gave room to comfort and all sorts of lasting his life. And thereby he became smitten by the Lord and that was a destruction to his seed. When you fail to go for prayers at the time when you should give it to the Lord and you becomes smitten by the Lord. And therefore there becomes comes a destruction in your life. When you fail to go for prayers at the time when you should give it to the Lord and you becomes smitten by the Lord. And therefore there becomes comes a destruction in your life. When you fail to go for prayers at the time when you should give it to the Lord and you becomes smitten by the Lord. And therefore there becomes comes a destruction in your life. When you fail to go for prayers at the time when you should give it to the Lord and you becomes smitten by the Lord. And therefore there becomes comes a destruction in your life. When you fail to go for prayers at the time when you should give it to the Lord and you becomes smitten by the Lord. And therefore there becomes comes a destruction in your life. When you fail to go for prayers at the time when you should give it to the Lord and you becomes smitten by the Lord. And therefore there becomes comes a destruction in your life. When you fail to go for prayers at the time when you should give it to the Lord and you becomes smitten by the Lord. And therefore there becomes comes a destruction in your life. In the same manner we see in Second Samuel chapter 6 verse 7 because the ark of the covenant which shook, Uzzah tried to hold it and we see he was smitten by the Lord and he died. In the same manner unnecessarily when you indulge in God's service or ministry, you will be smitten by God and that comes a destruction. That is why with this knowledge King David says, "I will not exercise myself in great matters or in things too high for me. Surely I will behave myself and quiet myself and become like a child that is weaned." In the same manner unnecessarily when you indulge in God's service or ministry, you will be smitten by God and that comes a destruction. That is why with this knowledge King David says, "I will not exercise myself in great matters or in things too high for me. Surely I will behave myself and quiet myself and become like a child that is weaned." In the same manner unnecessarily when you indulge in God's service or ministry, you will be smitten by God and that was a destruction to his seed. That is why with this knowledge King David says, "I will not exercise myself in great matters or in things too high for me. Surely I will behave myself and quiet myself and become like a child that is weaned." In the same manner unnecessarily when you indulge in God's service or ministry, you will be smitten by the Lord. And therefore there becomes comes a destruction in your life. When you fail to go for prayers at the time when you should give it to the Lord and you becomes smitten by the Lord. According to what we read in Second Chronicles chapter 26 verse 22, King Uzziah also he tried to do the work of a priest there. And he became smitten by the Lord, he became a leper and eventually he faced destruction in his life. When does a believer lose his good health and strength? When does a believer lose his good health and strength? When you fail to keep the Sabbath and not fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord. When you fail to keep the Sabbath and not fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord. When you fail to keep the Sabbath and not fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord. When does a believer lose his good health and strength? When you fail to keep the Sabbath and not fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord. When you fail to keep the Sabbath and not fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord. When you fail to keep the Sabbath and not fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord. When you fail to keep the Sabbath and not fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord. When you fail to keep the Sabbath and not fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord. When you fail to keep the Sabbath and not fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord. When you fail to keep the Sabbath and not fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord. When you fail to keep the Sabbath and not fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord. When according to Deuteronomy chapter 23 verse 21, when a child of God will make a covenant with the Lord, when he fails to observe it or hate, it becomes a sin and therefore he becomes smitten by the Lord. When you fail to keep the Sabbath or observe the Sabbath, the Lord, you commit a sin against the Lord and thereby the Lord smites you. So therefore don't make a covenant in that manner. And when you make a covenant, you have to observe it, pay it with a sacrifice. Don't remove the moustache, but if you remove the moustache, don't have it back once again. Don't take jewelry, but if you take it once again, remove it, don't put it once again. If you make a covenant in your life that you will not take medicine, don't ever take it. You cannot have double action and triple action after you come into the truth. You have to live as an original person as you are. Either you be a sinner or a saint or else be a whore or be a whore. But why are you haunting between the two and not being any one of them? If God be God, follow God. If Bale be God, you follow Bale. This is the common understanding on the people in CPM. If you commit some serious sin, that is a sin. If you will fail to take communion after taking water baptism, it becomes a sin against you, against the Lord. And therefore when you try to make a covenant, you have to pay it otherwise it becomes a sin against the Lord. If you will fail to take communion after taking water baptism, it becomes a sin against you, against the Lord. And therefore when you try to make a covenant, you have to pay it otherwise it becomes a sin against the Lord. According to what we read in First John chapter 5 verses 14 and 15. And according to First John chapter 3 verse 13, we can say because of his errors and mistakes, there was a curse that came upon his life. And thereby he became smitten and that was death also. According to what we read in First John chapter 5 verses 14 and 15. The sin is of two categories. One is sin pertaining to death and the other one not pertaining to death. You can go home and read that list which consists twenty-three things, items, and those are sins pertaining to death. What are those twenty-three sins? Romans chapter 12 verse 31, a list of Paul's speeches. Romans chapter 12 verse 31, a list of Paul's speeches. Romans chapter 1 from verse 29 to 32, we can say read the words of Saint Paul where he has mentioned a list of sins. And if he will actually observe them, we will all be in a defeated state. It is a very general thing that man is without good health right in the society today. There are people who are saying their sickness is because of the reasons they have no reconciliation. A particular sister became very sick. And fasting and prayers were held for her. And even prayer chains were held for her. Whatever that could be done scripturally, all that was done for her, but it was all futile. You can see Satanism, all the messages are sent to Satan, you are not going to get any revenge. This is what Pastor Don had told, whatever that could be done for your health and recovery, we have done it scripturally. All for the best of us, but I hope that you have got a sister somewhere living close by, you stay there in her place for some time. And this is who was sick, became ten stop all of a sudden. And this is what that six sister said, "I will go anywhere, wherever you may tell me to go, but I will not go there because we were not on talking terms even before I joined the ministry." And this is what Pastor Don said, "You must actually go there." And this sister repented. And she asked pardon from her sister even before she could go to her house. This is the was sick for many long time, many long years, but she became healed, she got healed immediately. And this is what that other man said, "I will not go there because we were not on talking terms even before I joined the ministry." However, others may endeavor and pray for your help, for your recovery unless you put yourself right and repent for your sins, you can never be healed of your sickness. According to what we read in the Gospels in Mark chapter 2, we can see there was a man of the policy, he was brought before Jesus. And Jesus is looking at the man's sons, "Your sins are forgiven." Only when Jesus said, "Your sins are forgiven," he became healed of his policy. When we turn to Job chapter 33, we can read about what happened to Job's life when he became sick. When we read Job chapter 33 verse 19. He was suffering so much in his bed of sickness. And he was experiencing strong pain in his bones. His bones were sticking out because he became so thin. Pray for him, even this evening you may have come to the presence of God without sound health and strength, with physical ailments, disease and sickness and the Lord is there to heal you. It does not matter in what circumstance you were made sick or became sick, but remember there is a redeeming or healing virtue that which is able to heal you and make you to recover. What is the healing power and who is that person who is able to deliver you and make you to recover from your disease? When we turn to Job 33 and read verse 24. I have found the redeeming item. Who is able to redeem us? And even according to what we read in First Timothy chapter 2 verse 6, Jesus Christ is that ransom who became a sacrifice for us and he became a ransom for us to be testified in due time. If you will find out who this ransom is, that which is that is Lord Jesus Christ and also accept this as Jesus ransom as a personal saving in your life, you have stepped out into the first step of conversion. One day a group of people came, a fellow was treating, he did not manage to do it. One instance after I finished the meeting, there was a thin-looking person who was bald-headed and who looked so frail, he came up to me. He had tied a lot of threads round his wrist, he would have gone to so many religious places for his recovery and the wife brought this man up to me. And after some days, a baptismal service was held. And in order to take baptism even on that day, there was a person who approached, he looked very fat and healthy-looking and he came along with his child. Looking at this man, I said, "You have just come today, you have to come continually in order to take water baptism here." But this is what he said, "I've been coming every month." Then I told him, "I've never seen you in my church." And this is what the man said, "I'm the same man whom you may have seen as a skeleton coming along with my wife and the Lord Jesus has healed me now." When you fail to keep the Sabbath and not fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord and therefore he becomes smitten by the Lord. When you reach Job 33, 25, you will be able to see the end result of obtaining the ransom in your life, seeking out to him and finding it out and experiencing that ransom in your life. His flesh shall be fresher than a child. And the word of God says, "He shall return to the days of his youth." This is the reason for the reason of the sickness of man's life. We see it's all because of the sins in his life and the failures and he is driven towards them. Lord be unto the name of God. And the second reason. When we turn to Matthew 12 and read verse 22. And this man, he had some was being tormented with the devil, with an evil spirit and he himself says, "He is possessed with the devil." When we turn to Matthew 15, 28, we can say when the Lord Jesus revealed that spirit, that child was made whole or it became normal. This woman was stooping for eighteen years, she could not lift up herself and Jesus said, "She was tormented with the spirit of infirmity." There is no definite name for this sickness, it was simply known as the spirit of infirmity. There are another example, in the second Corinthians 7, a wolf was bitten by Satan, a goat was bitten by Satan. And another reason or an example for this sickness is we can read in Second Corinthians chapter 12 verse 7, as to how Paul was tormented because of the thorn in the flesh and it was by the messenger of Satan. Even today in order to reduce the speed or the pace of the people, we see that Satan's power is working against the people who are powerful, popular and famous. We can see Satanic church also growing abundantly. A particular man, when he was on his journey abroad, he had taken a packet of biscuits and started eating the biscuits. For the sake of manner, he has offered the biscuits to the next person and also wanted him to eat it. He said, "Sorry." And he wanted to know the reason. The other man said, "I don't want it because I'm fasting." This man who offered the biscuit, he was a nominal Christian and he was put to shame thinking that the other man was fasting when he is also Christian. Immediately he had asked the other man to which denomination do you belong? And the man who was fasting, he had said, "I am a member of the satanic church." This man then questioned, "Do they fast in the satanic church?" And this is what that other man said, "Yes, we fast for three main reasons."
or the devil or because of the state of your mind
21:31 Tu ni garam aga sutti gari pillama parisutama kapadamel Avan oru van abatharanaay avan katthodiya bandhilavandu ukandhal Avan vyadi padukaran belivina padukaran nittrakim guda ilavatal maranathen okipoyutukaran
Palavini koranti ekloseni parichidi sadhan karati binaava Kenaku nusudusulasa devin vahasi ke bojaniita sahabaki vannina Ohu rogi vannita hetu tipinaava Ohu duruvaleva bavat ohu ledhavane vaavat Nindita patrune vaavat marin patrune vaavat sadhan karati binaava
This is what we read in verse 11:30 When a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself, he will become weak, he will become sick, and eventually even sleep too.
Saapartla jayam illamal vyadi padta dhaaga vedam solukarade
Kevin jayanethi kamanisa kathirukkamanisa rogi ubavadu devachini sadhan variva
Also we read about people who became gluttonous and they become sick because they have no victory over food
Enna kamam 11:31 ningalade parkalam yarachila avaguka jayamilla adu saapadukumnala ey vyadi padukurukaran
Ganan kadavai koloseni parichidi thiiseni pathi sadhan binaava Musk maashakamin onta jaantimunennata E anubhava kanna vitama on rogi ubavas sadhan karati binaava
We read in Numbers 11:13 They did not have victory over flesh, over meat, and even while the meat was in their mouth, they got destroyed
Enna kamam 11:41, 46, 47 la parkumbadu murumurukkaradanaala guda vyadi varukarade Murmuring, vedla ukanditni purushan manavi renduvar murumurudukidey renda guda Adukuda ulavayadi varadukka oru karnameha mari vurukaranu Bible solukarade
Ganan kadavai koloseni parichidi athliathriste kundupathu ne sadhan karati binaava Adhika vashin kendiriima pramini kiriima yanati hetu karunukutikene Ohunata arshas namu rogi velatunubavav Bahariyavasamya milisin keduromiin jeevatvana avastavidi Mevani roga vaavat baadavalete ohunata mohunadi matasitha binaava
According to one reading in Numbers 14, 15, and 16 Because of murmuring, complaining, and grumbling, people become sick and got destroyed In the same manner, in the hospital and the barium, when they go on murmuring, grumbling, remember that is the reason for sickness, this is what the word of God says
21:22 Oru thamelvittal vendu kheela vundu avan vyadi padtan
Devanarachavalaya palavini parichidi sadhan karati binaava Kenaku odumahale sita pahatita vettio roga thurumiya kiavava
We read in chapter 1 of the one about a man who fell from the loft downward and he became sick and got killed
Katthodiya parisutanaamathukumayum
Samanasiksha donamitamahivavava
Go beyond to the name of God
21:23 Sunamiyalu de kulande talay navugradu talay navugradu talay navugradu ne buriyudu chulidairna Koyyadukarase sette poitam
Devanarachavalaya hatarvili parichidi Dhahan namavili pathi kuda daruviku Tamaki vehisaruddha veesanakina thanavava Ani magi oluvakya ogumamorudunna Anathuromiya kiavavas sadhan karati binaava
In chapter 14, we can read about the son of the Finnish woman "My child kept on saying, 'My head aches and aches,'" and therefore, eventually, he passed away
21:24 Oru van kaalgaliile vyadi vandu avan sette poonan
Devanalekamputi dadri parichidi sadhan karati binaava Kenaku roga thuruvii pathu ne rogiyastadi avasani ohu miya kiavava
And in also second chronicles, we read about the man who became stricken with a sickness that was close unto death, and he too died
21:25 14, 15 la oru vanuki varaivaitukula kodallavayadi kodall kuncha kunchama ittu ittu vildundu avan settan
Devanalekamputi visekkuni parichidi Kenaku thamaki athunuvale baduvavale rogiyastadi Avasani ohu emakil marinidupathu vaavas sadhan karnavaa
We read in second chronicles, chapter 21, verse 15 About a man who became greatly sick by disease of the bowels and the bowels fell out by reason of the sickness, day by day, and he just passed away
Udiyar partla na parkumbadu lasaru vyadi padtan kuncha nalakala avan maritu vudukaran
Aludgyosimiapasalakabalati lasarasnavata roga thuruvaa Madakalukinnahu marinidupathula
In the new testament, we read about a man called Ezra who was sick for a short time, and finally, he too passed away
Opposinu unbadamadikarakale tabitha lundara ven vyadi padukaralk maritu vudukaran
Kaya namavili parichidi tabitha nematti rogi vi marinidupath vaavakya tipinaava
In Acts of the Moses, chapter 9, we read about Tabitha, who passed away and she became sick and then passed away
Vidi manave naani poodukumnada muddur karname te ugalukichonnen
Vavatini hetu karukattunak mangobhitriyeta buemi
Dear beloved, I have placed before you the three reasons
Naangali poodukumnada ongeludiyapavathinala vendala inbada ningal analyze pani paringal
Ma obadu vena vadhenavite obakay rogiyate hetu paapiyade obak madak obakay jeevite vimasabala
When you shall give you the time, you search out and analyze whether your sickness is because of any of these reasons
Yedavu oru pisasin porata onakende vyadiyekundu vandu la inbada ni aarayindu par
Yakshya porabandhi vaavat hetu kuttikene obadu me rogiyavellati tipedaay sodisikarabala
You search out your life and see whether the sickness is because of the affliction of the devil
Ilavatal yedavu mana baram mana veesanai dukkam purushanukuritha dukkam manaviyukuritha dukkam Uliyathukuritha baram ilavatal pillagalekuritha dhanaveesanai Yedavu yedavu onde kudumbadukaka ni adigamaha ulaitu thungamal ovati ova time pathu Ippudi guda vyadi vandrukala idhene ni aarayindu parthe Katthodiya sannidhanathle poodukani taaltavendian nera
Esat netinam sithe barak hetu kuttikene Netinam obakay sithe adhika vashin pilibadu kanaasaluvima hetu kuttikene Obakay bahariyavilisa, obakay swamiyavilisa, obakay darvanilisa Obakay powdavellavin, obakay raatridiva Athi kaalavelavan pava, adhika vashin vaddakirivima hetu kuttikene Adhika veesan hetvin, obakay roga thuruvada Kenam hetu akadikya sodisikarabala
All the sickness could be because of your lack of rest, lack of sleep, abundance of your work, or the grudge and the grievance against your children, against your spies, you analyze the situation and search out the matter
Arumiyana devanu de janame inna maalavellay undey nelavaram enna
Premini devataru saasvella vi obakay tatvi kumadha
Oh dear child of God, what is your state this evening?
Ni solukarara ikke enna
Obakay rogiyate tu kumadha
What is the state of your sickness?
Yoobu 11:22 Ni solukaray nan sugamai valindrindan ippudu ellam poivutade
Yoob dasidolaleesa vasusi vasikilme inibodensyal avasani kya parasannidu
According to Job 12:20, are you also saying like Job? Everything was so nice and plentiful, but I have lost all things now
Yoobu 31:35 Yen sugamalvameyegumbala poivutade inbada ni polamikundukaray
Yoopu te thisteli parichidi palusvili pathi sadhan karati binaava Magi sway kalyan siallema vegin givi kya kya
And according to Job, chapter 30, verse 15 Are you also saying, "My welfare passed away as a cloud"?
Valakulapin paavakaya
Inna maalavellail undey arikke eduva irukarade
Veda obakay rogiyate tumi avasilavine nikakwannapulavani
What is your confession about your sickness this evening?
Yenakusugam illai
Obakay prakashenam madasvayennata
I have no healing
Yoobu 21:22 Yenakusugamum illai, yenakailai parudum illai, yenakamayudalu illai indravana arikke edukarane
Yoopu te tumvili parichidi vesi hayvili pathi kya tipinaava Madpahasvaknete nishalavyaknete niwaduvaknete kya
This is what Job says in Job, chapter 3, verse 26 "I have no quietness, and the trouble has come upon me, I have no safety too."
Oru vela oru vyadiyalla palaviyadi onakuliporadi kundukalam
Savaravite ekka rogiyak novi Boha roga obathula porabadivinti bennapulavan
Perhaps it could not be just one sickness, it could be so many sicknesses striving with you
Yesaya mudalamadikara 6:31 Ullangal zodengi ujjantalai mattum adhala sugamey illai mulavadu vyadi
Yesaya putte palavini parichidi hayvili pathi milisadhan karati binaava Hisabodunaisit pathina dakva kisimasvayaknete enam rogiyin perisiti
This is what we read in Isaiah 1:6 From the soul of the foot even unto the head, there is no soundness in it because it is full of beautifying wounds
Indengi ningal vyadi padukumnada ningal kayvidapodukare
Obakay rogiyaventam ekala aththarimulabai
You will be left behind if you will be sick like this
Ulalaru elarun ugalivirukkarar
Yaloma obavadu esikaray
Everyone will hate you when you're sick
Ni saagunun virmurya illaiyam mattavani sikhara settabodun virmukaran
Ikkumani namayekyot vadaathundakya kalpanakaray
Whether you like to live or not, others will want you to die soon
1:31 Oru amalikken solukarane nan vyadi padten yen ejamana nenek kayviduputana inbada solukarane
Palavini samvay thisteli parichidi palvisli pathi ekkara dastikupavasannima roga thurubavin Magi swamiyama aththaragaya yakaya
And in first Samuel, chapter 3:13, we read about the man Amalakai He says, "My master left me because I became sick."
Indriki ongeludiyavyadi sugamaha vendham
Adhu obakay roga swavyayatu
You should be healed of your sickness today
Ongeludiyavyadiyinkarname te vedavasana thle adigamaha suttikattinadu ne karanam Ongelakandampanradu kalla ningal adu purindukundu adhala vendu velliya vara vendu indravadevane virmukaran
Obakay roga vallata hetu karuka shuddaliyavillen genna hara dakwanata hetu Obavadu dosha darchiniata varadu pathkiriyavatan novi Obavatatvain ivatata praminiyavasada
This is the reason as to why I taught so many reasons for your sickness in the light of the evidence of the word of God It is for you to analyze your problem and come out of your sickness
Unno igale yesu sumandaranbada viswasi payaga
Obakay roga yesu soasiisalubavav viswasa karane
May you believe that Jesus bore your sicknesses
Avudiyatalumugala ni gunnamaga la inbada viswasi payaga
Unavasikke paharavili nobasvay lebu vaavat viswasa karane
May you believe that now he strives, you are healed
Unpaavangale mannekkavarka adigaramu wallamayu undan inbada ni viswasi payaga
Obakay paavakavakiriyavat unavasit adhikaritvaksaha balayakti binaava viswasa karane
And may you believe that Jesus has all the power and authority to heal you of your sickness
Unno du poradi kundukarapisasin thalayay avan nasikirukarar Pisasin kriyayale alihtukarar avanai muttilamaga avan alihtukarar inbada ni viswasi payaga
Obasavadu porabadina yakshya ke kya unavasi vinashikal vaavat Yakshya ke hisa unavasi podikal vaavat Yakshya ke unavasi mulamimajayagnarthi binaava vishwasa karane
You need to believe that Jesus has destroyed all the powers of Satan that brings all the sickness upon you He has bruised the head of Satan and has overcome that Satan, that sickness
Andriki silveela avan nasikiradu mattaramalla samadhanatin devan satanay Marbadiyum inna mudalamnal koodatle ongal kaalgaliin gile nasikipoduvar
Inayshnaadu unavasi premakalavamanak novi Me avasannakali samadhanid devin vahasi nobo kalakin Satan obakay pathiata thama podikaranava et
And even in the same times, it is not only for the people who lived a full time but even unto you, in the end times, Jesus has trampled the head of Satan on his feet
Wellambola sathuruvum wellambola vyadiyum ongeludiyavalkaila uliyathile poradi kundrindhalum Aviyana varinna mudalamnal maalavellaila unakkava kodiyetuvarinve Ni viswasi tal un kankalay moodi mulangal podiye
Chaladara vakmin sathura pramini min chaladara vakmin roga obakay sevita obakay jeevite Yakshya ke nenu lebuva atmanen vahasi me palavini davasema Jayada jaya obakay jeevite esu vaavata viswasa karane
The devil may bring sickness like the flowers and the devil may bring sicknesses and distresses like the flowers against your life and ministry but if you have believed that Jesus will overcome all of them for you, be erect on your knees
Ni mulangal poda arambithal unakkavaradamana sayivanegal yavalkal pillisuniyangal mandarangal nasareenagya yesuvin naamathinalae nirmulamaga pogurada
Obadana gana gasanavastavidi obadu viruthu akarunulebu Hooniam kodavina gurukam bandanasyallama Nasariyay yesu krisusvansikke naamey vinashikupathvina vaytha
Even by faith, when you shall be erect on your knees by the name of the Jesus of God all these powers will be destroyed and you will have victory
Yeppeer padta vyadiyum yesuvin naamathinalae Ippudu unney vittum inna kaalay vittum un pillagale vittum un kudumbathay vittum Adu velliya fogatthan vendham
Khavara kara rogiyakkva me mahatikay jeevite Obakay darvanke jeevitalin, obakay powalvalin me shalavain Ani varinma pitamangvi ya yudumay
Whatever the sickness or reasons may be it should flee away from this hole, from your family, from your spouse, and from your children
Indavyadi un kudumbathay iruladayavaituvutade Indavyadi un uliyathay prakasamillamal maathivutade
Mevam roga obakay jeevita powal andakarin velanulabua Obakay sevi deepthiyaknetu adhuruva pathavata pathkala
This sickness made your life dark and also made your ministry as one which was full of darkness
Yendam manushanayam prakasipikara Andamayana velli needyin suriyan Ippudu unmel udipar adil kielavula arokiyam unney ippudu mudi shootam
Sammanu shekma alavke karannao Darmishtakame soriya obakari udavanathara Aipya paasavane obadu divvy sani parakshava labinava niyata
The son of righteousness who is able to enlighten every man he shall shine forth in your life under his wings, you will have healing
Andavari inna koodatle ulavukarade yettanavela unanugare
Me resime unavasiyavamati sakpankana vaavata kiedane thengi matagannava
How many of you feel that the Lord is moving in our midst even on the first day of our meeting?
Oru anjanimudaya aran kanna tarakari
Vinadi pahakittu kisimakilak obakay asviurtan lokaran
Four, five minutes, don't open your eyes
Yarayalimby velliya pogadi
Kisimakilak negativshalavin pitatata novan
Let now get up and go away from this hole
Muddinthal mulangal podiye Yenak gunamakum indravu oru vaathay solukundey
Hakinam dharinsit maavasokaranavakya kyanavay ekka vachiniyavasamivassidin
If possible, be erect on your knees and keep on telling the Lord, "Lord, heal me!"
Neerene kaluvum nan venbayavain
Swamini obamavasodhuva menava evitama susenudu vannemi
Oh Lord, you wash me, I will be made as white
Neerene gunamakum nan sugamavain
Obamasvakala menava evitama swavannemi
Oh Lord, you heal me, I will be healed
Neer yenakkava yelundarulum nan kheyutividuvay
Obam maavinuvay negativiyavamana ma jaagannemi
You arise for me, I will have victory
Ippudu yesu unak gunamakum nera
Me mahatavana hi yesu krisusvansikke vaavasvakaranavela
This is the moment in which Jesus will heal you
Ningal hundred percent expect panalab Nootchukunnoorun ningal devanu de sugathay yedirbarkalam
Obasidasiyav divvy devin vahasi ke kisvay apakshakaranavapin
You can expect God to heal you hundred percent
Yendavallamay inmel likka mudiyada
Kisidu ballamayga obakay kiriyassidin
All the power can withstand you
Unudiyavallamayani taritukal
Obay balay pralanda ganne
Put on your power
Unudiyabishagathay taritukal
Obay alipya pralanda ganne
Put on your strength
Unudiyakniyani yeditukal
Obakay ginnavallamagane
End up your fire
Yesuuna gunamakugira
Yesu krisusvansikke vaavat
Jesus will heal you
Bakathida bakathida thidai sadaniyara Amen, amen Mayyaga ve, mayyaga ve yenakusugavennuni yettanavela kathirkaya
Sabavinna madasvay avashyay yaduvitne kiedane apakshavin balasidin
How many of you are truly anticipating healing?
Avgamattu ungaladu kaya vaituna
Only some people raise their right hand
Evanay dakuna thosavane
Ningal unavyadiyani perumai paduthavenda yenakandaviyadiyirkenthi vyadiyirkenthi solavenda Elathukupinala irukaravavi dandramaha velasinchikittuke
Obakay roga ke na ankaralisa udavananipa Yakshya itama prayoga karalisa mayarinpa vaakriyakarivinsitava
Don't be boasting about your sickness, don't say that sickness, this sickness because the devil is moving, working mightily subtly
Yevyadi ningamudiyaga andavare inna 8:22 ke oru vaathay sollo
Me rogiy viva makay guru kanna pinisa Me ekka pathi obasidinavatama vaavasanne
Oh Lord, at this age twenty-three, you mention one word for my healing saved
Andavare noikya kuparangal
Me atay viisathulata unavasitana
Oh, cry out to God
Sugathay padukalangal
Swayalava ganne
Mistive healing
Oh rabakata thidai rabakata thidai Ya ra ba ra ba ra Yesuvin naamathil guna Yesuvin naamathil saukyam Yesuvin naamathil satan thadupunam Haryabika thidai thidai thidaiya Oh rabakara 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 ba na Alleluia
In yesu ala lam poodu In yesu ala lam poodu In yesu ala lam In yesu ala lam In yesu ala lam poodu Nivisvasitam poodu
Ay na
Nivisvasitam poodu
Gen da 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 ba na
Nivisvasitam 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 poodu
Oh thidai thidai thidai
In yesu ala lam poodu
Yesuvin naamath
In yesu ala lam poodu In yesu ala lam In yesu ala lam In yesu ala lam poodu Nivisvasitam poodu Nivisvasitam poodu Nivisvasitam 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 poodu
Oh dibana rabana
Nivisvasitam poodu Nivisvasitam poodu Nivisvasitam 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 poodu
Alleluia
Nivisvasitam poodu Nivisvasitam poodu Nivisvasitam Nivisvasitam
Ay na thidai thidai Alleluia, alleluia, alleluia Oh rabakata thidai rabakata thidai Alleluia, alleluia Oh rabakata thidai 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 Amen, amen Oru tagapanchunnan Andavare neer vandu umudiyakaygalay vayyum appudu yenakarokkayam gudakavane
Kenaku pava swamini obakay pramina bagasthe makay asthe tabanna ekkila matasvayalavane vaita kya
My father said, "Oh Lord, you come and keep your hand upon me, I will be healed"
Oru ejamantunnan andavare yenudiyavela karunukaka Oru oru vaathay sollo adupogusugamaiduva
Namatavat swamiyaku pavaasive magi dasya vennav Ekka vachana maatrayak pavaasivam menava evitavu sugavanava adhakya
And this is what our master said, "If you will speak one word for the sake of my servants, he will be healed"
Inna koodatle yar andavare yenak thodum inndu solukare Ilavatal andavare oru vaathay solum inndu yettanavela poradi kundukare
Kiedane swamini madathakeshva menava kya kyanavada Esat netinam kiedane swamini vachana maatrayak pavanakivam menava masugavanava kya kyanavada
How many of you are going to tell us this meaning? Oh Lord, you touch me, speak one word, I will be healed
Ay na bikkana bana sigana nibana Ay na bikkana bakathida bakaraniya Amen Vyadi unney vittu ippudu velagukarade
Roga dandubagin beharavi avasannai
Sickness is departing from you right now
Pisasun unney vittu velagukarade
Yakshya den obakay duruvii etukas
The devil is departing from you right now
Oru imsha, oru imsha
Ekvinaadiya
Just one minute
Vyadi unney vittu velagay nikka kudada Vyadi pisasun unney vittu velagay irka kudada Vyadiyam ippudu vairud Vyadiyam ippudu vairud bidinka padavendum Pisasay ippudu motthamaga aliikapadavendum
Roga obakay beharva notibithui Yakshya obakay beharva notidithui Yakshya saha rogiy mulan upata obakay jeevite nudara ivakalade vithui
Sickness should not simply depart from you and the devil also simply should not depart from you it should be rooted out from your life
Oru imsha, oru imsha
Vinadiya Just one minute
Yenapadu solukarane
Ima vesi kyanay
Why do I say so?
Adupogunavudane unakavyadi sugamana maritiriyam vedukupogunavunne tripiyirindala padutruva Adu tavar
Obay duruavastavidi oba swayaklabu lese obadu dene Namatdivasidikayavita nevath obakay rogiy vi dethina rogiy hani siddinasidui
When the sickness departs from you, you may think that you are ill after two days, you will fall ill again so that is how it works when it departs
Kumaran vidulayakinaal mayyana vidulay Inisagavare kunakavyadi vara kudada
Putraya nidahaskaranne nam sanay nidahaski Obakay marinidupath Obadu roga napaviniyathui
When the song shall heal you, you will have perfect soundness there will be no more sickness
Ribana bakara bakathida ribana Alleluia Amen, amen Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave
Vachina maatrayak pavaasivam menava ekkila sovinavat Obakay negativiyavam menava ekkila ma jaalabagannemi
You speak one word, I will be healed you just rise up and I will have victory
Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave Elarun oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Alleluia Haryabika thidai Alleluia Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave Alleluia Alleluia Haryabika thidai Ribana bakara bakathida thidai Ribana bakathida thidai Alleluia, alleluia Alleluia Haryabika thidai 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 Ay na thidai thidai Yandi dandara sai Oh rabakata thidai Hymana sahaniyara haniyara ba na Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave Oru vaathay sollo Nan sugamadaven Alleluia Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven Neer yelundarulum nan jayambavave Oru vaathay sollo nan sugamadaven